Okay. Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Eastchester meeting for June. This is Tuesday, June 8, 2021. Tonight's meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom. And that what that means is that there'll be certain items and protocol that when we conduct meetings in person transpire which will not be happening tonight like a roll call or a pledge of allegiance. But announcing at this point, we anticipate that our next meeting in September will be conducted in person, old school down in the auditorium. So anyway, getting to the ground rules. Firstly, we observe Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Order, which means among other things that if anyone would like to be heard, whether it's board members or anyone else for that matter of the public, you'll be recognized by the chair. We also, as it relates to new applications, if someone wants to participate in the public hearing, you're going to use the raise your hand feature on your computer. You'll use star nine if you're calling from a phone. Our deputy town attorney, Robert Tedesco, will acknowledge you and invite you to speak, and you'll unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Tonight on the calendar, there's only one new business item, and that would apply once the public hearing is open. And for that applicant, just to keep in mind, as all applicants know, firstly, that as a term and condition to any new application, your matter is not decided upon tonight. It is deliberated upon and would not be decided upon until the next meeting would be the earliest. Also, and all of the matters, all of the, I'm sorry, documents that are part of that application are mark submitted. They're a public record as of now. So you don't need to read your application in its entirety. You could do that. It's not going to either help or hurt your application. I would probably ask for purposes of presentation that you just highlight what your application is all about. Okay, so having stated all the ground rules, I have a couple of motions to make. The first is that I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 13, 2021 meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Secondly, I make a motion to cancel the special meeting of July 2021 for calendar purposes. Is there a second to my motion?
Second then.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The following application has been adjourned to the September 14, 2021 ZBA meeting, and that's application 20-19 Kids Corner 189-191 Brook Street. Okay, now, next set of items on the on the calendar tonight are items on for resolution. The first item, I make a motion to approve application 21-19 to Pasadena Road. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Cahalan, okay, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved four to zero. Item number two, I make a motion to approve application 21-1884 Lakeview Avenue. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. That application's been approved four to zero. Third and last item on the resolution calendar, I make a motion to deny application 21-13 for Sprague Road. And just as a reminder, a yes vote means a member is in favor of the denial. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, to the vote. Mr. Cahalan?
Yes.
Mr. Nerzia?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
I vote yes. The application's been denied four to zero. Okay, on to our new, one last item, which is of new business, 21-2497 Tuckahoe Avenue. If the applicant would like to give their presentation, you may proceed.
Okay. They're just getting on board here.
Sure.
Okay.
Hello?
Oh, yeah. Do you guys have video or are you just audio?
There we are.
There you are. Good. Okay.
I lost you as you were promoting it to shut down real quick, so I didn't hear what was last said. I'm sorry.
Alan, they can just begin, correct?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. If you didn't hear, I just announced that your your application and you may proceed with your presentation.
Okay. First off, thank you all for taking the time to hear this application. Everyone who's involved and listening in as well, thank you for the time. This application is to get a variance for my driveway that I currently have. It's been recognized that we are over the three feet required setback from neighboring property by approximately 1.1 feet. So this variance is to correct this issue by getting a variance for that 1.1 feet of overage. In regards to the driveway itself, it doesn't necessarily change any character of the neighborhood. I've never heard any issues prior to this from any neighbors in regards. It's a narrow piece of property, so it's limited on both sides, as we saw for other projects we've done where we receive variances. The requested area, even though it's a three feet, we're requesting the 1.1, which does seem like a large amount because it is only three feet. But essentially, it's only, like I said, the 13 inches. So we're hoping it's not that much. There's no known impact on the environment or the physical conditions of the neighborhood or any other pertinent issue in regards. And the reason we're going for this variance is because due to construction we did to the house in 2014, the driveway was inadvertently, when it was put back in, instead of being within that three foot boundary, the workers inadvertently went over by the 1.1 feet, and it brought to our attention just recently, which is why we're now applying for it.
Thank you for your for your presentation. So at this time, what I generally do is allot the board an opportunity to ask questions and possibly even make comments. So I'll start with the board. Mr. Cahalan?
None.
Mr. Nerzia?
No questions.
Mr. DiMarco?
Nothing.
I have nothing further at this time. I will make a motion to open this matter to the public for a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Tedesco, if there's anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this application, tell them to come forward and be heard. State their name and address for the record.
Okay, I see, Mr. Chairman, that a hand is raised, appears to be a Mr. Sean Dweck. Mr. Dweck, I'm going to invite you to unmute yourself if I can.
Oh, hold on. I'm sorry, Rob.
It's okay.
Can you do it?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, Mr. Dweck, if you would please identify yourself and unmute and address the board.
Good afternoon, folks. Will I be on the screen as well? Because I don't see myself. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, there's no no video. I don't know if that makes a difference to anybody.
If I may, it doesn't, but if
I'd prefer to be seen if I could.
Maybe we'll give you a second to see if you can iron that out.
Is that on my end?
Yes, that would be on your end if you have a camera on your computer.
Oh, I do have a camera, but I'm not seeing any option to
Go to the if you scroll to the bottom of your screen, Mr. Dweck, you there should be a little picture of a microphone where you can mute or unmute, and next to it is a picture of a camera, a video. It says like stop video or turn on video.
Yes, so there is a there's a the mute button, but there is no camera there.
And also, Rob, I'm not seeing a camera icon by his name, whereas most people, if they have that option, have the camera icon. But that that would be totally on your end.
Hold on, let me see if I can.
Yeah, that's totally
Is it gonna be one of the options that I have?
Mr. Dweck, that would be on one of your settings.
Yeah, I don't seem to see any. Bear with me for a second, and let me see if I can. You know what? I'll just make the presentation verbally. It's I don't want to hold up, hold everybody up with this. So I submitted this afternoon a letter to the town. I was advised by Ms. Uli. Is that correct?
Uli, but close enough.
All right. I was advised that it was distributed to the to the members of the board, so I would respectfully refer the members of the board to my my letter. Without going through each item in the letter, because you have it in front of you, what I would point out is the the part of the application for the area variance contains a five question questionnaire. And that's really what I would like to focus on for the purpose of of my client, Mr. Morocco, who lives next door at 99 Tuckahoe Avenue. Question number one is whether there's any undesirable change or detriment to the nearby properties. And in conclusory fashion, the applicant has said that there isn't, and the application says that there isn't, but there there actually is. And as I'm sure this board is or will now be aware, there's a serious water infiltration problem, which has only emanated from the time that the applicant has started doing construction to his property. There's been construction done on the property before, including an addition which was done. There was a plan for a for a patio to be redone. And while I understand that the only issue that we're dealing with here today is the is the the issue of the driveway, it's relevant because the the area where the the properties align with each other and are contiguous with each other is where Mr. Morocco is having all of the issues. And I submitted photographs, which are just illustrative of what the problems are. Every time that there's a significant rainfall, his property floods in the back. And Mr. Morocco has been a resident in that house for over 50 years. And it wasn't until the time that Mr. Camroti, the applicant, started their construction that he started having issues. And we're very mindful of the efforts that the town has made to try to address these issues with certain testing and whatnot. The the issue still remains, and pure logic dictates that it's something that the applicant has done with their construction that is causing this problem. It it just doesn't happen out of nowhere. With respect to question number two, is there some other method that can be achieved in order to, you know, other than a variance? And and the short answer is yes. Have him narrow the driveway back to what it should have been done. This was the this was done in a backwards fashion. The the construction that was done on the property, you know, there was a plan to file for the for the house and for the addition that they put on. And I think it's, you know, for lack of a better legal term, a lame excuse to say that the construction workers just didn't know. There had been a fence there that was taken down. And I can speculate that the fence was removed because it really was the only thing discerning the property lines. And as a result of the fence being removed, you really can't tell where the property starts and ends between the two neighbors. And if the fence had been had remained up there, it actually would be clear right at the onset that there was, you know, an issue with the with the the width of the driveway. Question three, with respect to whether the variance is substantial. It is substantial. It's it's 37 point, I believe, 37.6%, which is is extremely substantial. The only the only argument that is made by the applicant in the application is that, well, it seems substantial, but it's really because it's we're only dealing with three feet. But the fact is, is that 37% is 37%. It's it's a very significant amount. Whether it's discernible to the eye and has an impact on the physical environmental conditions, whether it's discernible to the eye at the glance of the the driveway itself, I will concede probably not. But the impact is huge because the driveway is running off onto Mr. Morocco's property, and it's causing massive flooding every single time. And, you know, Mr. Morocco is an elderly gentleman who enjoys the, you know, his plantings in the backyard. And for for, as a result of this, a lot of that has been completely ruined. And lastly, that, you know, the question is whether this was self-created. And there is no question that this was self-created. This could have been done properly in the first place. The application for a permit for a driveway, you know, which is available to the individuals doing construction, whether they're contractors, architects, or the individual homeowner, it's available to them. And in clear language, it says right on the application page, what the what the zoning board is. It says driveway regulations. And item three, it very clearly says that driveway pavement or any pavement, stones, or gravel adjacent to the driveway may not be closer than three feet to any side yard property line. So I would suggest to the board respectfully that the questionnaire fails on every count with respect to this application. Now, let's look at this from the realistic standpoint as opposed to just the technical standpoint. From a pure technical standpoint, I think that the application ought to be denied because they haven't met the requirements. And I think that if the requirements, if this board were to vote in favor of the variance, I think the decision essentially would be arbitrary because they haven't shown with with satisfactory evidence that they've met the criteria required in order to get a variance. But let's look at it practically speaking. What is Mr. Camroti doing? He wants to get his driveway approved. What does Mr. Morocco want? Honestly, he just wants peace. He wants his property and he wants it where it's not having water leakage and seepage ruining his plantings and causing aggravation to him. That's what he wants. And so we're not looking to cause harm to the applicant, and we're not looking to 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 necessarily have his application denied. What we want is to have the 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 issue resolved. And whether that means having the appropriate catch basins that are sized accordingly and appropriately, whether it means having the driveway pitched in the specific areas that butt my client's property, or whether having appropriate leaders installed, whatever it is, if Mr. Morocco's property can be can 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 go back to the condition that it was in, meaning no water leakage and seepage from the neighboring property, which occurred when the construction was done, then he doesn't have any issue with them having a variance. But if that isn't rectified, then he vehemently objects to it. And and that is essentially the nature of the of the of the the presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you for your commentary, counsel. Their board does not have questions for the public. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to be heard, Mr. Tedesco?
I am looking at this point, Mr. Chairman, and I do not see any hands at this time, which indicates to me, it appears to be that there's a hand up from a panelist. Is there a Mr. Notif?
Yes.
Okay. I are you representing the the applicant?
I am.
Okay, so then, if I may interrupt, right now, it's the public that is heard. The applicant and or counsel have an opportunity to reply. So right now, we're hearing the public on this.
All right.
Mr. Tedesco, is there anyone else from the public that wants to be heard?
There are no other hands from the public.
Okay, so having indicated that there's no one else from the public that wants to be heard, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the applicant will now have an opportunity to reply, and then the board will have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments. See, please proceed.
All right. Thank you. And good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving us the time at this hearing. So Frank, first off, is there anything you want to say at this time, or you want me to address the?
I'll let you address if anything. I'll time in or add at the end.
Okay, sure. So in response to the letter from Mr. Dweck, Frank prepared a response to the letter, which hopefully you all have, and will be able to review each of his responses, which are point by point to the assertions in Mr. Dweck's letter. So you could read those at your convenience. I don't think it would play any purpose to go through those now. But one of the things that I think just came out of of Mr. Dweck's presentation is that this has absolutely nothing to do with the driveway. In fact, by his own admission, he stated that, that Mr. Morocco, it says, it's not about the driveway. It's about an alleged water condition in the backyard that he alleges is coming from the patio construction of Mr. Comrade. And so it's my position, and I hope your position and understanding, that the application filed in support of the variance is all accurate, and it all should be ruled favorably for the reasons stated right in there, and for the reasons that are stated in Frank's response to Mr. Dweck's letter, which you could read through. And so I know that I can't question Mr. Dweck right now. So I'm actually going to ask Frank some questions if you'll indulge me.
Actually, I will not. If you can make your comments, please. And then Frank could also make his commentary. It's not a trial. So
Okay, now that's fair.
You can reply to Mr. Dweck's commentary or add anything to the presentation that you would like.
Sure, thank you. I understand. Okay, so so first off, in terms of the assertion that water is going from the driveway to Mr. Morocco's property, there has been no evidence presented at all that that's the case. If you look at the photos supplied by Mr. Dweck, I don't think you I don't think I didn't see any photos of water going from the driveway to Mr. Dweck's property. So and in terms of water going from from Mr. Comrade's property into the back of Mr. Morocco's property, number one, I don't think that's relevant even slightly to your consideration of the variance. And if it was, I think what Frank would tell you is that he was told that before, he was told by a neighbor soon after he moved in, before there was any complaint at all, a neighbor from across the street told Frank that Mr. Morocco had complained, in fact, about a water issue with the prior owner of 97 Tuckahoe Avenue. Okay, that this was had nothing to do with anything that Frank did, construction or otherwise. In addition, the comrades had people from the town of Eastchester come over, look at the property. They had independent engineers come and look at the property, and they all said the same thing, that the comrades were totally within code. They provided whatever remediation was required and went beyond that. As you'll see in the letter, they put in and spent their own money on putting in things that would mitigate against any potential water problem. And if you look at the land, the contour of the land, you'll see the way the land contours. And so water naturally, as we know, flows downhill. Okay. And that's the contour of the land. And it's not the responsibility of a neighbor to do anything about that. The other thing I want to mention is that the complaints about the water did not commence until 2019, yet Mr. Morocco complained initially about the water back in 2015. Okay, so for years, he was complaining about water in the backyard area, never complaining about the driveway until 2019. And so it was clearly out of vengeance for what was going on on the property. Further, I'll mention that, and you say this is not a court of law, and I will limit the discussions we had to try to resolve this, I don't know, nine months ago or so, when Mr. Dweck contacted me, we had numerous conversations. We both agreed we wanted to resolve this amicably. And Mr. Dweck suggested and proposed that Frank allow an engineer provided by Mr. Morocco onto his property for roughly an hour to inspect the property, to look at water flows, and to try to determine whether there would be a proposal to remediate any issue. Frank said, yes, he could come onto the property. And then it was crickets, radio silence. And when I waited, didn't hear back, oh, and they asked about dates and times that the engineer could come. We provided that information and made ourselves available. And yet there was silence. Okay, Mr. Dweck never responded to that. Other than when I followed up several weeks later, he said, we're considering our options. So again, I think that Frank has made every effort to work with his neighbor to try to mitigate any issue, to try to resolve it in an amicable way. And so we believe that the variance should be approved. These water issues are irrelevant, but even if they were relevant to the reasons I stated, Frank has acted in good faith. One final point I'll make on the fence issue. So Mr. Dweck had the audacity to suggest that Frank somehow did this in a underhanded, bad faith way to somehow hide the property line. Well, the fact is, and you could check with Mr. Dweck's client, is he agreed with Frank that he could remove the fence. Frank indicated to him that that it would make the construction work on the driveway a lot easier if the fence were removed, given the proximity of the fence to the driveway. And Mr. Morocco approved the removal of the fence, so that, which made a lot of sense. It wasn't to hide anything. Had Frank known about the three foot requirement, obviously, he would have done that, complied with it. He had to think that he's he somehow purposely did this is ridiculous. If you look at the driveway, you'll see an extra foot did not need to be added to the driveway. The the guys who did the paving put it in. Okay. And Frank had, I understand ignorance is no excuse, but he did. The fact is, he did not know about it, certainly never would have done it purposely. And then talking about the variance, the argument by Mr. Dweck that there's a violation of the code, and therefore the variant should be denied. Well, why do people file variances? They are filed when people are in violation of the code. They either need an exception made to it, or an approval that otherwise they couldn't do. So that's the very essence of the variance process. I thank you for your time. And Frank, if you have comments by all means.
Thank you for your presentation, counselor. Does the applicant have anything else to add?
Just a couple of points, just for clarification. So there's some background on this driveway. This, the removal of the fence, as was brought up, and the driveway that's currently there now was originally, all took place in 2014, when we put the addition on the back of the house during that construction phase, which we applied for multiple variances at that time in order to proceed with the construction. which we applied for multiple variances at that time in order to proceed with the construction. As was stated in regards to this driveway, it was unknown. Otherwise, we would have, of course, applied for a variance then, as we applied for other ones at the time. And also, as was stated, when we put in drainage in regards to our patio, which was put down in 2015, when our neighbor started complaining about water on his property, the time that he said was from that patio. When we put in drainage to appease all parties in the situation, we put in extra drainage along the property side that abuts to his property. And that was all inspected by the town of Eastchester, all passed. I was told, thank you for putting extra drainage. He's, complaints still continued to come in regards to the water after all the inspections were done and approved. We did multiple inspections with Eastchester and independent engineers, as was also stated. Eastchester came multiple times, Highway Department and Building Department. They did a visual inspection again, a water test, a seepage test, a dye test. And they pretty much did all those numerous times, as well as a video inspection of all the leaders running from the house, from all the drains on the property, all the piping on the ground, and everything was all in good shape. Nothing was collapsed and damaged to hinder any type of water. So I just wanted to mention that in regards to the water aspect. As for the driveway, as you all, I'm sure, are aware, we had the heavy storms today and the flash flood warnings, which we did get the heavy rain. I went out to check, being ironically, it was today before tonight's meeting, and to confirm all the water that runs down the driveway due to the land, the pitch of the land on the street, being at the bottom of essentially a pretty big hill. The driveway itself is pitched, so the water does go into the drain at the bottom of the driveway and keeps it from seeping over the driveway into the grass or into our neighbor's property. So I just wanted to mention those points.
Okay, thank you for your commentary. So just one point of order, and then we'll go back to the board. Just for the viewing public, that these letters and the commentary today as well is part of the public record. So these things have all been entered, and they're part of the file and public record. All right, so to the board for comments or questions, Mr. Cahalan?
Yeah, I mean, to me, we just spent, I don't know, 25 minutes on stuff that has no relevance to the application. This is about a variance for a driveway, not about drainage. I, 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 I'm amazed. This is my, I think, 11th year on the zoning board, and I've never seen anything like this before. You know, people forget, we volunteer, we put time in, we go to the properties. You know, this, you know, was, you know, when I saw the variance, yeah, 30% is a lot. Go look at the property, and it doesn't look like a lot, and it doesn't look like on paper. But we're talking about a driveway. When I talk, we just spent a lot of time on stuff that I didn't want to hear about. And I had to read last-minute letters being submitted that, you know, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm employed someplace else. This isn't my and I'm happy to do this with the town, but getting something at, you know, a quarter to seven on a Tuesday night isn't right when it really doesn't pertain to the issue. The issue is, this man could remove 13 inches, and he has no issue. His neighbor has no case, in my mind. He's asking for 13 issues, 13 inches, 13 inches. You know, Alabet, it's 30%, but it's 13 issues. I'm just a little upset that we have to listen to, I'll call it shenanigans about water, when it doesn't pertain to the variance that's being asked for. And that's my comment for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cahalan. And again, I'm certainly sensitive to your commentary because I've made this comment on more than one occasion, that, you know, we want to keep good board members, and we try to be pithy and to the point. But under Robert's rules, I do allow some latitude when it applies to the five-part test. So that fault doesn't lie with the stars, it lies with me. Mr. Nerzia?
Yes, thank you. One question. There was a note and a comment about six or nine months ago, the parties had talked about getting an engineer to take another look at it. And why wasn't that followed up on? Because no matter how we rule on this, one party is going to be happy, the other isn't, and I think these neighbors are going to be at each other's throats moving forward. So I'm just, I guess my comment is, is why wasn't that engineer consulted with? Because maybe additional information from a professional on that water drainage issue would have satisfied, to some degree, the neighbors. So the question is for both the applicant and the opposing counsel, why wasn't that engineer consulted with?
I'm sorry, Peter, you're, you're asking what question?
Oh, yeah, why wasn't that engineer, they had discussed amongst themselves about getting an engineer. Why, why was that engineer not brought in at some point six or nine months ago?
Counselor or applicant?
It's irrelevant.
Mr. Cahalan, if I may, let me, let me avoid the cross-talk.
But the town has already spent money and went out there.
The applicant wants to answer, please.
We were more than willing, we tried to schedule, we gave them multiple availability dates for their own engineer to come onto our property to do whatever they wanted to. We agreed on a, a, a time and engineer, and when we gave them our availability of multiple dates, we never heard back from them. We never, nothing was ever scheduled. We gave, we responded almost immediately to every one of their correspondence or all their requests. We've never gone at them. Every request they've had, an issue they've had, we've complied with. And we just never heard back after we gave all of our availability for their engineer to come onto our property.
Mr. Dweck, what's your comment to that?
Mr. Nerzia, I, I, that I have to cut you off on. The public has, the motion was made, the public hearing has been closed on this, and it's not a trial, so I'm not going to allow that. Do you have anything further? Do you have anything further?
No, no, that's it.
Okay, Mr. DeMarco?
I have nothing.
Okay. I don't have anything either, other than that I've reviewed the application and the answers to the five-part test. And I am ready to make a motion to adjourn this matter to the September meeting for resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, having nothing else before me, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. And before I ask for a second to my motion, I'll just add a reminder that the next meeting is September 14th. And that meeting so far is going to be in person, the way we conducted all meetings until the pandemic. There'll be notice in advance if that has changed. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Have a nice summer.
Yes.